Standing for invocation by Council of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to make a comment today that in terms of the past weekend, we had some significant issues of violence that need to be addressed, and it makes us all know that we have still a long way to go in terms of solving some significant problems that continue to exist in our community. And just for the moment of silence, please, let's ask our Creator to give us the strength to continue and do the work necessary to solve the problems of violence and poverty in our community. Amen. Thank you.
City Clerk's Certified Publication on the Daily Record on July 24th, noted for pre-council, and regular city council meetings, July 31st, 2012. A current copy of the Meeting Act is posted in white binder on the East Wall Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on our published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage of debatable issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk?
Zoning ordinance on flat rating and planning board attachments, item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 4014 South 13th Street from G.C., General Commercial District to C.C., Community Commercial District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number five, begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number six, ordinance to rezone property located at 5813 Holmes Street from D.R. to R. 4, Single Family Residential District, High Density A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Seven and eight are one case. Seven is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate into that district property located southwest of 90th Plaza and Sorensen Parkway. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is resolution, special use permit application to allow convenient storage is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, items number seven and eight begin now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is John Mangtrecker, 330 North 117th Street, Ian Day Consulting Group. I'm representing the applicant if there are questions.
All right, sir. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
They're both passed seven to zero. We'll take items nine through fourteen. It's one. Case nine is ordinance to rezone property located southeast 132nd and West Dodge Road from L.O. to C.C. Community, and L.O.N.C.C. to C.C. Community Commercial District. Ten is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the A.C.I. four district of the area of civic importance overlay district to incorporate into that district property located southeast 132nd and West Dodge Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eleven is ordinance to approve a major amendment to a planned unit development overlay district in a C.C. Community Commercial District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Twelve is resolution to plat, entitled Anderson Acres Replat Four is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Thirteen is subdivision agreement is hereby approved. And fourteen is a special use permit application submitted by Lexus of Omaha for a major amendment to a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a community commercial district is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant Lexus of Omaha. This will allow for the redevelopment of the Lexus of Omaha dealership at this particular location, and with that, I'm just happy to answer any questions that you have with respect to the six items that are before you. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to go on record with my colleagues to let everyone know that I'm extremely happy with Mickey Anderson and his group. Mickey has been working with this neighborhood for three years, and during this time, he's met with him over at least a dozen issues, some of them being sound issues, traffic with regards to trucks going into the neighborhood, barriers in terms of whether or not we were going to have streets cut off or roundabouts or whatever, lighting, communication, and in every case, they took, the company, Anderson, they took the initiative. And I've been on the council for 11 years, and I've never seen as much corporate outreach to the community as I have here. So I just want to say that if we could clone whatever we did on this particular situation, this location, if we can clone it and do it over and over and over again, we could really, really have a great city. So I just want to give Mickey Anderson and Baxter and all the different Lexus, the affiliates, just a great hand. And I'm not saying that because there hasn't been any check or anything given to me, but just I was really impressed with the work that they did with the neighbors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would be nice to get a new Lexus.
Franklin, I will say this, we do enjoy having the Lexus dealership on the other side of Dodge Street, but when it's time to move back, that'll be okay.
Move it over to your side, huh?
It's at 120th on my side now. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine through fourteen are passed seven to zero. Item fifteen, ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 213th and Walnut Streets from A.G. to R. 4, Single Family Residential District, Low Density A, Planning Board, Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fifteen begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Brian Doyle, 11440 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
There's an opponent.
Sorry. Please name an address, please.
Take me a minute. Hi, everyone. My name is Lori Pete. My husband Lawrence and I live at 21401 Pine Circle in Elkhorn. I am the president of the Property Owners Association, and I wanted to take some of your time to add some insights as to what's going on with regard to this additional development. I believe you have been told from other persons from our development that we have one form of egress in Ranchview Estates, and there are currently 104 homes in Ranchview One and Two, and this development extends beyond that to the south to add another, apparently 42 homes, still with the one egress. I would submit to you that until the infrastructure is in place for our subdivision, that this doesn't make a lot of sense. We have significant issues right now with Pacific Street, which is where the ingress to our development exists. Our children are not afforded a sidewalk to walk to school. My daughter had to walk out the door, down the street, down Pacific Street, through a ditch, across the street to get on the bus to take her to school. So what I'm hoping that you guys will consider for one moment is that while this may seem good in terms of development, it is not good in terms of the safety of our children, in terms of having put the bricks in place to make Ranchview Estates as it exists right now appropriate for further development. We have other sidewalks that need to be put in place. I would hate to see a situation like what happened back in December when we all had our Christmas plans changed. Ranchview Estate was snowed in. M.U.D. exists on the west side of our entrance for about three blocks, and there's no real, nothing really to capture the snow. Ranchview Two was completely snowed in. No one was able to come in or out of Ranchview Two, which would now include Ranchview Three. If that happens, I submit to you, and if there is a health problem, that person can't get out, and any emergency vehicles cannot get in. So I want to put that in front of you as consideration for, before we get another form of egress in Ranchview Estates, that this doesn't make a lot of sense based on that infrastructure. In addition to that, we have a dynamic going on where there's an SID that incorporates the first and second piece of Ranchview Estates. One SID. We have a P.O.A. for those. Then we have an unincorporated area, which is also Ranchview Two, which is another P.O.A. Now we're going to have another SID and another P.O.A. I would submit that I would like some advice on how three governing bodies can govern one subdivision. We all think the same one entrance, all the same common areas, and three governing bodies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I should read up items sixteen and seventeen. They go with this. Sixteen is the resolution that the plat entitled Ranchview Estates Three is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval, and the seventeen subdivision agreement is hereby approved. And that's what she was talking about as well.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Have to repeat your name.
Brian Doyle, 11440 West Center Road.
Do you want to make some comments on the concerns that the homeowner brought up?
Number one, there is only one ingress and egress out to Pacific Street. I would note that both Public Works and Planning have reviewed this. It also has a favorable recommendation of the department and a unanimous recommendation from the planning board. An additional ingress and egress wasn't something that is possible at this site, but I think it still fits within the city's requirements.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Cunningham if, yes, you are there, if you would comment also, please.
We're Cunningham, Planning Department. We did indeed have a lot of analysis and thought given into this one. This particular addition will enable us with the reconfiguration of Skyline potentially to provide additional access. It's not going to occur without beginning to fill in the blocks on this, both to the south and to the east and to the west. And they're not going to be all done at the same time. That's just not the way development is done. So we have worked with the developer to provide the right-of-way, the pavement, to provide those other access points, both to the east, to the south, and to the west. So we are laying the groundwork to provide that access. Public Works, and I hesitate to speak for Mr. Stube, but testimony has been given to the planning board that studies were done on our traffic, and the number of cars are not the number sufficient to require any improvements. Unfortunately, this area was done when we were soft on sidewalks as other areas within the cities, and so there are no sidewalks, and we don't really have a mechanism short of special assessment districts or something like that to put the sidewalks in. We are willing to discuss that, to get the sidewalks in, because as you know, now we do require sidewalks to go in in every subdivision, whether they connect yet or not, to deal with that, basically that need to have that kind of pedestrian, safe pedestrian access. So the planning department does strongly suggest, recommend the approval. Planning Board did also, so.
All right. Thank you.
Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Resolutions for preliminary plats, item eighteen, resolution for preliminary plat entitled Miracle Hills Replat Three, located northwest of 120th Street and West Dodge Road along attached conditions hereby accepted. Preparation and final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number eighteen begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number nineteen, resolution for preliminary plat entitled Georgetown Replat Six, located southwest of 144th and Arbor Street along attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number nineteen begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number twenty, resolution, special use permit application for, to allow automotive sales in a general commercial district located at 6901 Maple Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend denial, and we have a communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda, item number twenty begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
My name is Dennis Burnett. I live at 6825 Maple Street. That's across the street from the proposed site. I don't really want to look out at a car lot, but aside from that, the situation there is there's no place for them to park cars, and it's a safety situation because Maple Street narrows to two lanes from four lanes. There's all kinds of traffic there. There's no place for them to park cars around that building. It's a total safety thing that way. When people pull up on 69th Street going north or west on Maple, they have a situation where a lot of times these guys will have a row of big trucks parked out there, and they almost have to pull out into the traffic lane to see, to turn, to go left. There isn't any traffic controlled from the east side of Maple all the way to the west side of Benson. There are no stoplights. There are no traffic lights of any kind, and so traffic moves through there extremely fast, faster than the speed limit a lot of times. So most of us in the neighborhood are kind of opposed to the situation where there would be a lot of cars to be allowed to be parked around there. It's just not a safe situation for that corner. Now, there are some other considerations also, as fact that I personally don't think car lots are very beautiful, especially used car lots, so I, you know, looking out on that wouldn't, don't like that, but that's probably not one of the things that you will consider. I would like to have you consider the fact that the guys there on that corner have made that building look as presentable as it possibly can look. They've done a good job with, you know, that, but it's just not a good place for a car lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name's Eugene Heinzman. I live at 2811 North 69th. As Dennis said, that place is nothing but dangerous when you're on Maple and you're coming out on 69th. I've had to pull out far enough that my door is even with the sidewalk, and by that, then the front of my car is sitting out in a curbed lane. You can't have the front of your car sitting in a curbed lane because you can't see west. It's dangerous. We have more accidents on 69th and Maple than you do from 56th, 52nd to 72nd Maple. And we have car lots you can't believe. They took one out here the last week at 60th Avenue, but we still have a car lot at 67th Second, two blocks north of Maple. We have a car lot at 71st and Maple on the north side. At 72nd and Corby, we have a car lot on the west side of the street, and a half a block south of that car lot, we have one on the east side of the street. That's just going south on 72nd. If you go north, we have a storage lot, one block north, that's full of trucks, cars, and boats, and it looks like the devil. If you go two blocks farther north, you have Grover's Used Car Lot, and you have actually his new and used car lot. I think we have enough car lots in the area, but like I say, the speed on Maple Street, if you pull out too far, people going east will never stop. And when they line up to make a left-hand turn going east, the people pull out of that line and come up the east side. Just last week, we had another accident because somebody wouldn't wait. And if you can't see, we're going to have more accidents. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
The special use permit is denied, seven to zero. Liquor, item number 21 and 22 go together. Twenty-one is Holiday Inn Downtown Omaha, 1420 Coming Street, new application, no location. It's a Class C liquor license. Twenty-two is a catering liquor license for the same applicant in the same location.
Public hearing on agenda, items number 21 and 22 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Kyron O'Brien, 13974 Hickory Circle, just here if you have any questions.
Kurt Trevetti, 1420 Coming Street, owner of the Holiday Inn. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Mr. Trevetti, are you the owner and the manager?
I am the owner and the management company for the Holiday Inn.
Okay. You'll be the liquor manager for this?
Yes.
Okay. I need to ask you, and also, Mr. O'Brien, you have, as a manager, your job is to make sure your business follows all the rules and regulations of the law. You understand that?
Yes.
And you have a criminal history here with a DUI.
I don't.
Mr. Trevetti does, and that was not that long ago, so this shows me that you weren't following the law yourself there. So how, what can you tell this council that you will prove to us that you will be a responsible liquor manager and make sure that the patrons follow the law?
It's a very fair question, and I understand why you're asking. Although it wasn't very long ago, a lot of things have changed in my life for the positive. Since then, I've been married. I now have a son. Perspectives have changed and will stay that way. Beyond that, I don't know what else I can tell you other than that, you know, business sense, perspective on life, everything is in a different direction now.
How will you assure us that you won't sell any liquor to minors?
Absolutely, by the training that me and Kyron go through that's required by the state. And me personally, I'm very, very strict on policies of our hotel staff. Any violations, we don't tolerate very easily, whether it's violations within alcohol or even within our customer service. It's a huge investment on our part. We do not want to jeopardize that one bit.
Okay. I appreciate that. And Mr. O'Brien, you don't have a DUI, but you have a history here in '08, too. You had liquor open container in a public place.
Yes.
All right.
That was outside my liquor establishment. I'd taken a beer away from a customer walking out, and when I kept standing there explaining that to the gentleman that he couldn't do that, he left. The officer came up and said, hey, you can't stand here with it. Wasn't going to argue with her, and just took my ticket and went on with the day.
Okay. Have you both taken any of the certified liquor training classes that are offered by the state?
Yes.
You both have?
Yearly, yeah.
Okay, and they're current. You both have taken them?
My recent one was in April.
Okay. All right. All right. That's all I need then. Thank you. Move to approve.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
They're both adopted seven to zero. Item number 23, Fire Barn Sports Bar and Grill, 487175 L. Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. We have a communications from the planning department that you need, if you wish to grant this, grant this contingent on they're getting their proper permits.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name's Steve Franzen. I live at 23404 Denton Street, Waterloo, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Garnett.
Mr. Franzen, you're listed as the manager. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. In looking over the application, I see that Mr. Harlow is the president of the corporation. Is that correct?
It's my son-in-law, yes.
That's your son-in-law. Okay. And am I correct in seeing on the application that one or both of you have taken the certified liquor management?
Yes, yeah. Both of us.
Just where, is this in the, that little strip mall there?
Yeah, it's in the old Buffalo Wild Wings location.
Ah, okay. All right. So traffic in and out of there is somewhat controlled by the design of that, and you're going to have the normal security measures that previous establishments have had in there?
Yes, we will. It's, Nautilus Companies want to develop it, and they have divided entryway coming into it, and it's a very large parking lot. It's the old bowling alley that used to be down there, so they've got a very large parking.
Would that make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Oh, Gary, that's contingent on the plan.
Pending the condition of the permits.
Yep.
And one other thing, I did talk to Jay before the meeting, and, because I didn't know what he was referring to, and we did pull back ours outside, we're waiting on our fence designs and stuff, and that's what his thing was. We didn't have our approval for an outside area for eating or whatever. And we already told the Sheriff's Department, they pulled it off their agenda, so we'll reapply for that once we get our stuff back, but that's the only reason.
And that was a conversation that you had with Mr. Jay Davis?
Yes.
Of the planning department?
Yes.
Again, motion to a pending permits.
Yes.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Again.
Yes, again.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes, for the first time.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 24 is Italian Gardens Restaurant, 1228 South 6th Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jeff Camp from Italian Gardens, 908 Forest Avenue, is here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hi, my name is Charlie Aliano. I live at 619 Pierce Street, and that is in the heart of Little Italy. The food and the service here at the restaurant is second to none. More importantly, Jeff and his staff have shown that they are good neighbors and they are good stewards of the neighborhood. So with that being said, I would ask you to approve this designation for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Nancy Callinger, 1215 South 10th Street. I hate to cook. People my age, most people my age, women my age, hate to cook, and so I love going to the Italian Gardens to have a wonderful meal. There are times when I could use a glass of wine with my meal, and there are times when other people my age would like a glass of wine with their meal. So we in the neighborhood are very, very much, very much in want of his liquor license. So anyway, thank you very much, and I hope you vote correctly. Bye.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just think...
Yes, I just think, I want to thank you for reaching out to the neighbors as I'd asked you to do. It's nice to have an Italian restaurant back in Little Italy, and it is kind of ironic, you're in the old French Cafe, not French Cafe, the Cafe de Paris, and more recently the Q Consumables, so it'll be nice to have activity back in that area. And I understand you need the C license because you have Italian wines that you want to sell by the bottle.
We want to sell the wines, we have a, we're planning on a wine tasting every month, and we want to offer those wines for order, for our customers to order and take with them.
So I wish you luck and would make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Are you open for lunch?
Not yet, but we're thinking about it.
Just dinner, okay, fine. Thank you. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number twenty-five, Smidley's Driving Range, forty-seven-hundred North One Hundred and Twentieth Street, Class I liquor license, new application, no location, it's a change of stockholders.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-five begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, I'm Cindy Stiggy, one-six-two two-O Shirley Street, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
I'm Matt Stiggy, nine-two-four-two-Z Street. I was the previous holder of the license.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number twenty-seven, Super Saver number twenty at fifty-seven-ten South One Hundred and Forty-four Street, request permission to point Amanda Veliskey, a manager of their present Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-seven begins now. Are there any proponents?
Amanda Sevilakis, seventy-one-oh-four Audrey Street. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number twenty-eight, Jake's Cigar and Spirits, sixty-two-oh-six Maple Street, request permission for a special designated license for a fundraiser beer garden on Military Avenue between Maple Street and Mini Street on September eighth, noon to two with music ending at midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, my name is Matt Biggins, representing Jake's Cigars and Spirits at sixty-two-oh-six Maple Street. I just want to say we've been doing this block party for about five years now. Since we've been doing it, by my math, we've raised over two thousand dollars for local charities. By involving local merchants and food vendors, we've also raised, or at least allowed, many thousands of dollars to be distributed throughout the Benson community and the Omaha area. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Matt, I just wanted to say congratulations to you and all the events team in Benson for a very successful weekend last weekend for the HUN twenty-fifth anniversary.
Thank you. It was a blast. Everybody had a good time, and the turnout was really stellar, really stellar.
Yeah, very well done. And I know you've always done a nice job with this event, too, and so I welcome that again, and would move approval.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number twenty-nine, Saint Stephen the Martyr's Catholic Church at one-hundred-sixty-seven oh-one S Street, request permission for a special designated beer license for a parish festival and fundraiser on August twenty-fourth from six P.M. to midnight, music would end at midnight, and August twenty-fifth from six P.M. to eleven P.M.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-nine begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hello, I'm Steve Orsy, representing Saint Stephen the Martyr at one-sixty-seven oh-one S Street. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number thirty, Saint September Fest Salute to Labor, request permission for a special designated license for Beer Garden at Century Link Center Omaha and on Parking Lot D, August thirty-first through September third, music would end at midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty begins now. Are there any proponents?
Linda Moran, sixty-nine-ten Pacific Street, Suite four-fifty.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number thirty, Saint September Fest Salute to Labor, request permission for a special designated license for Beer Garden at Century Link Center Omaha and on Parking Lot D, August thirty-first through September third, music would end at midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty begins now. Are there any proponents?
Linda Moran, sixty-nine-ten Pacific Street, Suite four-fifty.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number thirty-one begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, excuse me, Tommy Nguyen, four-five-three-five Grover Street, here to represent Rehab Lounge. I'll answer any question that you guys may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir. If you've been noticing, all of the ones before you, the music have been turned off at twelve midnight, and that's a standard that we have here, and so very, very rarely do we go to one o'clock. So the only way that I'm going to support this is if you stay in line with our twelve o'clock.
I've spoken with Carmen and Buster Brown already, and I approve the twelve, we can shut down music at twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock. Mr. President, subject to twelve o'clock.
Well, let's, we need an amendment anyway, so let's have an amendment to amend the area, the date to August seventeenth, correct, sir?
Yes.
And twelve o'clock for the music to end at twelve o'clock.
All of those three in one.
Yep.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved as amended, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they remove unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers thirty-two through thirty-six were held on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers thirty-seven through forty and forty-two through fifty are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Hello, Stephanie Unger, Benefits Manager. I'm here in support of agenda item number forty-six. I'm here available to answer any questions, and I also have a representative from Allegiant Health, Dr. Anthony Hatcher, Medical Director with Allegiant Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
This is thirty-seven through forty and forty-two through fifty. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Now, item number forty-one, resolution to approve the Menards Incorporated Tax and Refinancing Agreement to implement the plan for the rehab and redevelopment of the vacant, redevelopment site known as Menards Plaza at Seventy Second and L Street. It's hereby approved. We have an amendment.
The public hearing on agenda item number fifty-one was held on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As amended, second. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed as amended, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule seven-eights, due to no meeting being held August seventh, the third reading of public hearing on agenda item numbers fifty-two shall be held on August fourteenth. Pursuant City Council Rule seven-eights, the third reading on agenda items number fifty-three through fifty-nine shall be held on August fourteenth. The public hearing on these items are today. Item fifty-three, Orange Clinic has a voluntary acquisition of certain properties at eighty-three, eight, eight-three-four North Seventy Second, eight-oh-six North Seventy Seventh and sixty-seven-ninety-two Manderson Street for the purpose of Coal Creek Flood Mitigation Project.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-four, ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable storage district known as B-one-seventy-six at one-hundred-and-seventy-six-oh-five Wright Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-five, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorized distribution of funds for the tri-county regional strategy project that will provide first responders and emergency responder communications in Douglas, Thorpe, and Washington Counties.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-six, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the City of Omaha Douglas County Community Response Team grant to provide funding for the coordinated communications response to domestic violence.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-seven, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the Raska Crime Commission Grant to subcontractors care people Sudan, teen, girls chat, real-life situations, Raska Children's Home Society, Omaha Street Schools, One Community Connection, African-American Youth Leadership Development Program, Center for Holistic Development and Compassion in Action.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-seven begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number fifty-eight, ordinance to amend sections twenty-two dash twenty-two and twenty-two fifty-five to comply with requirements for the Internal Revenue Service and issuance a favorable determination letter to make clear that the system is maintained exclusively for the benefit of the city employees.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number fifty-nine, ordinance to amend section twenty-three, reflecting changes negotiated between the City of Omaha and the Professional Fire Service Managers Association for the years two thousand and eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-nine begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name is Mark McQueen. I am an attorney with the law firm of Baird Home. I am an attorney with the law firm of Baird Home. I was retained by the city to negotiate contracts with the city's unionized bargaining units. My intention here today was to provide you with a very brief overview of what this tentative agreement includes, and then break it down more specifically so that you have a fairly precise definition of what exactly this particular tentative agreement accomplishes. From a broad perspective and in general terms, the first thing I wanted to say was fire management did a good job in negotiating this contract. They were asked to say yes to some concessions that are very difficult for them to say yes to. The negotiations were constructive and professional, and I think they need to be recognized for that. In terms of specific accomplishments, we went into these negotiations with two primary objectives in mind. We wanted to accomplish significant pension reform. We wanted to accomplish significant healthcare reform, and we wanted to do so with a fiscally responsible manner. And I believe you will see that those objectives have been accomplished. This particular agreement resolves a five-year labor dispute dating back to 2010 and provides the city with another two and a half years of labor stability. Specifically, the agreement includes wage, pension, health insurance terms that I think you will find attractive. The agreement includes a change in the step pay plan for fire management, not only the chief, but also the assistant chiefs. And those step increase plans were designed to enhance the likelihood that fire management would stick around for an extended period of time as opposed to seeking early retirement. We've all noticed in the newspapers, particularly of late, some concern with the pension liability of the city being driven or aggravated by early retirements from management officials. And so, we made some progress in that regard. And last but not least, from a general perspective, I believe we've set a precedent here which will allow for negotiations with Local 385 to proceed in a manner which increases the likelihood of an agreement as opposed to undermines the likelihood of an agreement with Local 385. So, that's a positive thing as well. In terms of the specific provisions, pension reform was a big, was and still is a big issue with the city. In this particular agreement, we achieved all of the pension concessions that were previously negotiated with the police management team, that were previously negotiated through the tentative agreement with Local 385 that was not approved by the City Council last year. But we added to those particular pension concessions. Specifically, we achieved additional contributions from fire management and additional 1% pension contribution that will become effective in January of 2014 and a .78, seven eighths of 1% pension contribution effective immediately after the ratification of this agreement, which is a little bit more of an aggressive pension contribution than we witnessed in either of the police management and Local 385 agreements. More importantly, we negotiated a pretty dramatic change in the pension retirement rate for new hires. We actually rolled back the benefit levels for new hires back to their 2001 level. And in so doing, we reduced the maximum benefit available through pension for new hires from 75% to 65%. We increased the length of service requirement in order to achieve a maximum pension benefit from 25 to 30 years. And we increased the minimum no penalty age of retirement from 45 years to 55 years of age. In addition, we retained a provision that was found in the Local 385 tentative agreement that provides for a 7% per year penalty for any employee, any new hire that retires prior to the age of 55. We made some significant progress on the problem historically referred to as spiking. In that regard, as you recall from the police management and the Local 385 agreements, the city historically took the approach of trying to eliminate the overtime spiking by developing what is known as a career overtime average, CODA. In this particular agreement, we actually were more aggressive at solving that problem. And under this agreement, fire management would no longer have access to overtime earnings or compensatory time off banks in order to spike their pension. So, we've eliminated essentially that spiking potential through this agreement. Most of these concessions concern new hires, as I've mentioned earlier. But for current employees, with less than 20 years of service, we've actually increased the length of service required for achieving maximum pension benefits from 25 to 30 years. Those are the pension-related concessions and terms that are worthy of mention. In the area of health insurance, we did something that's unprecedented in the fire department, and that is, we moved the fire management team from the traditional fire management and fire department health insurance plan into the city's standard health insurance plan. It's a very, very big issue with the Local 385 negotiations, and we accomplished that particular goal. In so doing, we adjusted the premiums to be paid by fire management from 0% to 7%. We increased the co-insurance or decreased the co-insurance amount from a 90-10 plan to an 80-10 plan. We increased the deductibles by more than 100%. I can give you the specific deductibles if you're interested. We increased the maximum out-of-pocket that fire management would have to pay pursuant to their health insurance plan by more than 50%. We increased their prescription copays. All of these changes, by the way, are consistent with the city's civilian and standard health insurance plan. And perhaps most importantly, we changed the manner in which future retirees will receive their health insurance benefits. And by that, I mean, future retirees would receive the exact same health insurance benefits, the plan and the premiums, as active employees. That's another significant change that didn't exist before this particular tentative agreement. Now, of course, concessions like those require some movement by the city on its position. The city made some concessions as well, and specifically in the area of wages. This agreement is literally seven years long, dating back to 2008 and continuing forward to 2014. We increased wages over that seven-year time period by an average of 2.5% per year. Through 2012, we by design matched exactly the police management settlement terms that were previously approved by the mayor and the city council. Those terms essentially provided for 2.5% increases per year. In 2013, we negotiated, consistent with the budget projections or the requirements of the city, a 1.75% increase in base salary. And as I mentioned briefly earlier, we created a six-step pay increase plan that will require fire managers to stay in their positions for a six-year period in order to achieve the maximum pay increase. The idea being, we want them to stay in their positions. We want them not to retire early and contribute adversely to the pension funding problem that the city has experienced. Also, in the area of wages, we eliminated a little bit of an unusual provision that's been on the books for some time. We have assistant chiefs who work in suppression. We have assistant chiefs who work in the non-suppression area. And historically, there's been a difference in pay between suppression and non-suppression. The non-suppression assistant chiefs earn more by a factor of approximately $3,000 to $4,000. That differential was remedied historically by the city through a provision called holiday pay, which essentially eliminated the difference in pay so that the assistant chiefs were paid the same amount regardless of whether they were working in suppression and non-suppression. We eliminated that distinction in the interest of transparency so everybody could understand exactly what people were being paid moving forward and in connection with this six-step pay plan. And in so doing, in the area of holiday pay, we mirrored what the CIR has ordered the city to do in Local 385 so that the Local 385 members are receiving the exact same holiday pay benefits as fire managers are under this particular tentative agreement. Last, in the area of longevity pay, we made some modest adjustments in longevity pay so that fire managers with between seven and 14 years of service have their longevity pay increased by a factor of 1/4 of 1%. Those with 14 to 21 years of service had their longevity pay increased by a factor of 1/2 of 1%. And for those fire managers with 21 or more years of service, we increased their longevity pay by a factor of 3/4 of 1%. Now, those particular concessions should be viewed in comparison to what the CIR comparability standards are. And in that particular area, the longevity standards for the comparable cities to Omaha are more than double what we are paying here pursuant to this particular contract. They would be in excess of 6%. In our particular contract, they would range from 3 1/4 to 3.75% in the area of longevity. So, that's the summary and the breakdown overall. This agreement, like any others that are hard-fought, has some elements that some, including myself and the city council, would consider less than attractive. Overall, it's a very good contract for the city. Overall, it achieves our primary objectives of healthcare reform and pension reform. And for those reasons, I would ask that the city support this particular contract and approve this particular contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents?
Mike McDonald here, representing the Professional Fire Service Managers Association. Our collective bargaining group is made up of the fire chief and our three assistant chiefs. As Mark mentioned, and I'd like to thank Mark McQueen and the city council for their dedication and the time you put forward to try to come to an agreement that we have here in front of us today. With the idea of negotiations, it is a give-and-take process, and we believe there was compromise. And again, through Mark McQueen's dedication and working during the weekend and weekends, we've come to an agreement where our group, our collective bargaining group, has tentatively agreed to, and we're asking you for your support. And I'm here to answer any of your questions today.
Thank you, chief. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to thank the Labor Negotiations Committee, which is composed of Councilman Jerem and Councilman Festerson and myself, and also thank Mark McQueen, our negotiator. I think everyone has been all along very focused on this process. And our goal, as Mark said, which I'd like to repeat, was significant pension and healthcare reform while having fiscally conservative settlement terms. And we do believe that we have achieved this, and we have achieved what has not been achieved since 2007, and that's an agreement with the fire management. So, we're very grateful that we've come to that agreement. We do sincerely believe that this agreement is superior to both the police management contract and the Local 385 tentative agreement that was rejected because of the pension and healthcare terms that are in this newly negotiated contract. As Mr. McQueen said, it did resolve a five-year labor dispute pending 2010 and '11 CIR litigation, which is off the table now, and it avoided the threat of CIR litigation in the future, which would be 12 through 14. As Mr. McQueen went through the different terms and conditions of the contract, I don't think I need to repeat that. But most importantly, too, it established a precedent by which the rank and file of the firefighters and the general public can evaluate future negotiations. So, we're very grateful that we've come to this agreement. Of course, it'll be up for our vote next week, and we ask that the council approve this agreement. Any questions you have, or two weeks, two weeks, we'd be happy to answer. But we're very pleased with the progress that we made, and we think that this is a good agreement for the city and for the fire department. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stothard. Mr. Brown, we're going to take a point of privilege here for Mr. Festerson.
No problem.
No, go ahead. We're done. Do it now, Pete. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to note real quick, the crowd that just walked in to listen to our meeting today includes my family, my mom and my sister. Sister visiting from Chicago, Annalise Crawford, and my nephews, Peter, Andrew, and Daniel Paul Crawford, accompanied by my daughter, Anna Festerson. So, we appreciate them being here in Omaha and coming to listen to our meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Do you have anybody else who wants to speak?
Oh, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to tell the chief that I appreciate you working with the council. We go way back, and some of that going way back has been some times where it's been pretty tense. But I've also known that you're a man of integrity, and so I want to appreciate, I just want to say I appreciate you working with the council. And this is a great step towards the right direction. I've always said that we've got to do things for the betterment of the whole, and I really think that this is exactly what I had envisioned all along, so I appreciate it, chief.
Annual Financial Reports. Item 60 is City Council, Nebraska, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, fiscal year ending December 31, 2011. And 61 is the Land Reutilization Commission of Douglas County. General Purpose Financial Statement for the year ending December 31, 2011, and the Independent Audit Report.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.